My name is Wendy Everett. I'm the interim chair of the Quality Improvement and Patient Protection Program, and I want to thank all of you for coming today and for the effort and you've put into and the interest that you have in this topic. As you know, this hearing, public hearing, is being held by the Health Policy Commission to receive testimony on our proposed and now public regulations that are related to registered nurse staffing in intensive care units in acute hospitals. The purpose of today's hearing is to receive comments from the public, specifically comments that are related to the formulation of the acuity tool that is going to be used to assess patient status, the method of reporting to the public on staffing compliance in intensive care units, and the identification of the quality measures that are going to be used over time, and then hospitals will report to the public. So we're focusing today on those three specific topics, and I hope that you will make sure that you address these as well. If any one of you wishes to record a session, if you would please check in with Colleen at the end of the table before you do so, we would appreciate that just in terms of our being compliant. There is a sign up sheet at the door. I think that we have captured all of the folks who would like to testify, but if for some reason you missed that, just let Kelly know or Colleen know again at the end, and we will add you to the list. I will call your name in the order in which we have them, and then I will also let you know which better will be up next. So we won't necessarily go in the order in which people signed up, but I will give you a little bit of advance notice. So listen closely. Please provide your testimony on the regulation, and we will be keeping to the times that were posted. So three minutes per individual, 10 minutes per panel, and we do this so that everyone will have an opportunity to provide input on this really important topic. And as you know, we would really encourage you to submit written testimony. The written testimony and the oral testimony are given equal weight. They will be posted on the website, so if you submit written testimony, please make sure you don't have any patient identification information in there because it will become public, and we wouldn't find that. So when you come up, as always, I know many of you have testified before, please say your name and identify the organization you're with. And I think the final little piece of direction here is that we do allow public officials the courtesy of going first because they're usually interrupting their legislative duties to come over, and so I may kind of bump the order around if that happens. We are expecting Representative Denise Scarlett from Newton.
Needham.
Needham, thank you, to join us and won't interrupt anyone's testimony, but we'll put her in as soon as she comes. Are there any questions about the procedures of the process before we begin? Why would we want to introduce ourselves? Yes, of course. I introduced myself, and then I was not gracious enough to acknowledge everyone else up here. So we'll start from the very end to end. Because you don't have a microphone, please shout.
Great. My name is Lisa Snellings. I'm Assistant General Counsel at the Health Policy Commission.
Hi, I'm Paul Hannes, a member of the Health Policy Commission, Commissioner Everett. Hope it's okay, just my own identification and learning, although I'm not usually a member of this committee, I wanted to come today to learn, I appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Glad to have you, Paul.
Alice Moore, Under Secretary of Health and Human Services, here as Secretary Mary Lou Sodder's designee.
I'm Dr. Carol Allen, a member of the two ICU committees.
Lois Johnson, I'm General Counsel of the Health Policy Commission.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm David Selts, the Executive Director at the Health Policy Commission.
Hi, good afternoon. Colleen Elstermeyer, the APCC's Chief of Staff.
Thank you, Elstermeyer. Okay, great. Okay, we're going to start with Donna Kelly-Williams from the MNA, and after Donna, we'll ask Terry Hudson-Jinks and that panel to come up. Welcome, Donna. You would speak into the microphone. Are we recording, Colleen?
We are.
We are, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Donna Kelly-Williams. I am a registered nurse at the Cambridge Hospital and the President of the Massachusetts Nurses Association. I was also part of the team that negotiated the language for the new ICU law. I have submitted written testimony on behalf of the Massachusetts Nurses Association that delves into the details about what parts of the proposed regulation the nurses feel work in which parts could be better, including a redlined copy of the proposed regulations showing us suggestions for improvement. I will not go into such detail during my testimony here today. Instead, I would like to touch on some key issues where we have concerns with the proposed regulations. The first is the language that appears throughout the draft regulations referring to a one-to-one or one-to-two nurse-to-patient assignment. The law does not set an either-or standard. The standard set in the law is a one-to-one nurse-to-patient assignment, with the opportunity to move to a one-to-two nurse-to-patient assignment in limited circumstances where the patient's condition is stable enough for the nurse to be responsible for a second ICU patient. The standard is not no more than two patients, which has been considered and was rejected. Any regulation that does not clearly state a one-to-one standard with an option to move to a one-to-two if a patient is stable enough directly undermines the intent of the language negotiated and agreed upon. There are several places where this occurs in the proposed regulations, and my written testimony identifies each instance and proposes new language. The second concern I would like to address is the assessment by the staff nurses in the ICU. The law clearly states that the assessment shall be done by the staff nurses in the units. In the ICU, the nurses work together, and assignments accepted by the nurses reflect that team effort. That assessment of the patients by the staff nurses in the ICU, the experts, was to be further supported by an acuity tool. Only where a disagreement arose between the staff nurses, as aided by the tool, was a manager or designee involved. This must be corrected in the final regulations to reflect what is the law. My next concern is closely related to the last, and is regarding the involvement of the nurse manager in the determination of the assignment, which is under the Nurse Practice Act, is ultimately a decision of the individual nurse as to whether he or she accepts or rejects the assignment. According to the law, the nurse manager is involved only when the nurses on the unit, aided by the acuity tool, cannot agree on the appropriate patient assignment. But in the final analysis, the individual licensed nurse must make the ultimate determination as to whether he or she accepts the assignment. This brings me to the acuity tool that is addressed in the proposed regulations. The acuity tool there is to assist the assessment process, not to act as a substitute for the professional judgment of the registered nurses. And the makeup of the advisory committee that selects this tool must have direct care ICU staff nurses working with management to formulate the tool. As written, the proposed regulations call for the advisory committee to be comprised of at least 50% registered nurses who are not managers. We believe this language would allow for the appointment of non-ICU nurses, and request that the language be changed to specifically require that the committee include at least 50% registered nurses who are direct care ICU nurses.
Donna, I'm really sorry to interrupt. One last point, your time's up.
Oh, okay.
Do you want me to finish first? You can make one last sentence.
Okay. Finally, I would like to thank the Health Policy Commission for the inclusion of the language stipulating that the patient assignment in the ICU may not exceed two ICU patients at one time. The law, as passed, does not provide for any exceptions to the regulations and should reflect that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, if we could have Terry Hudson-Jinks and the panel come up, and after that, it will be the MNA panel headed by Claire O'Connell. I don't need to be a martinet about the time. We have two hours. I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak, so I will ask you to stop somewhere between three and four minutes. For a panel, you have 10 minutes, which gives you three minutes apiece. Be crisp and focused.
Thank you. I'm Terry Hudson-Jinks. For the past 30 years, I've been a member of the nursing team at Tuscanizel Center. For the first 10 years, I was a bedside staff nurse within the MNA, taking care of critically ill patients, followed by 11 years as a nurse manager in the ICUs. I'm proud to say and delighted that I'm the Chief Nursing Officer at this time. Critical care happens to be the body of nursing practice that I know the best. It's been my pleasure over the years to implement many protocols that have only proven to increase and improve patient outcomes. I have seen firsthand many times over the impact of excellence in nursing care within the critical care community. I'm committed to ensuring that that continues. It's been my experience, quite frankly, that the numbers of nurses really does matter. It matters in combination with many other variables. Who are the nurses? How much do they care about what they're doing? What protocols and evidence-based practices are they following? And who are the members of the care team? And as an organization, what safety practices can they use to help them do their job? Many, many variables. Several months ago, we did reach an agreement together with the MNA on the specific language of the staffing law. The law, to me, is very clear. It provides the flexibility needed to provide minute-to-minute patient care and decision-making. My concern today, preview, is that an assignment of one nurse to one patient or one nurse to two patients shouldn't be confused with an assignment of one nurse to one patient or one nurse to two patients at all times or any time. This is quite different. This language, the proposed language, actually provides rigidity and inflexibility in meeting the minute-to-minute needs of patients. Nurses may be assigned one patient, but they actually work together as a team. Take Mr. Smith, for example. He's one-to-one nurse taking care of one patient, and he decides to become very, very sick. We do need to be able to spontaneously, without interruption, allow other nurses into that room to meet his needs. Anything else would not be all right. It would be safe. The same is true for Mrs. Smith, who might need a central line placed, and evidence has shown that one nurse at the bedside watching the insertion of that line actually helps that patient stay safe. I'm worried and concerned that that nurse is going to start to think about this law and whether or not she should stay in that room or manage two patients. Or could we look together at the patients in the ICU and the resources in the ICU and make another plan to cover that patient in the meantime? This is what happens every day in most every ICUs. We need assignments, and we need nurses being flexible in how they allocate resources together. There are other situations that are less urgent, but also really important. It's important to me that nurses' voices are heard in withdrawal of care decisions that are held in team meetings outside the ICU. Or if a patient or family is going to have a new diagnosis, disclosure, the voice of nurses needs to be there. And I don't want a nurse. I'm concerned that a nurse will think, should I go? Should I not go? Maybe I can't go, when actually they should go. And if the environment in the ICU is such that we can make a plan of care to care for the patient safely, that is in fact what should be done. The proposed language at all times and at any time language goes beyond the scope of the law and completely alters the meaning and reality. I'm concerned that a law that was created to promote patient safety could in fact inhibit patient safety and be quite dangerous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Mary McCauley from Mass General.
I'm one of the nursing directors of surgical ICU. Determining the canines of a patient by diagnosis or by specific indicators alone does not address the unique care requirements of every patient, nor does it account for the unique environment of each ICU. Applying 12 generic indicators as outlined in Section 807 of the proposed regulation will not provide the flexibility or the necessary information for all ICUs to differentiate patients based on their specific care needs. Each hospital should be permitted to select a valid acuity tool that incorporates evidence-based, straightforward, differentiating indicators which take into account patient care needs. And it creates the tool as just one component of creating a staffing assignment and is used in conjunction with staff input, understanding of staff experience, and the physical layout. It's also important to note the development, revised proposal also asked for advisory committee within Section 806. While I agree that it should include staff nurses, since they have the end users, there also should be equal representation from nursing and hospital leadership, physicians, IT, other staff that have the hospital's global perspective for implementing the tool within the hospital operations.
Good afternoon. My name is Sharon Donnelly. I've been a nurse for 24 years, working at Bedside Management, and for the past five years have been the program director for the Acuity Program at Brigham Women's Hospital. I'll be addressing required elements of the Acuity Tool. First and foremost is the element of validity. All of those tools should be statistically tested and validated to confirm that they accurately capture ICU nursing workload and hours of care. They should ensure that staffing recommendations are consistent across all ICUs and facilities. Another required element of any tool is reliability. Methods need to be incorporated to ensure that the tool is applied correctly and uniformly and that the outputs are accurate. There must be ongoing training and education and support for staff and managers in the proper use of the tool, understanding and application of the indicator definitions, and an interpretation of the DAP. In reference to Section 807 of the proposed regulations, which states the acuity tool shall be tailored to the unique care needs and circumstances of the patient population in any ICU which the acuity tool is deployed, the element of transportability is essential. There needs to be an ability to use the same tool across multiple unit types and patient populations. To have multiple tools within one institution will be overestimating unnecessary. Another important element is ease of use. It is important to minimize the documentation burden on the ICU nurses to allow them to focus on their patients. Partament, the tool we use at the Brigham, has shown through decades of research that assessments of each system do not need to be itemized, as they are in Section 807, Part 4A of the proposed regulations, in order to capture the needs of the patient and correlate those with hours of care requirements. Documenting the most frequent interval which a patient requires assessment of any physiological parameter sufficiently reflects the workload associated with the overall assessment needs of the patient. Minimizing the need to learn multiple definitions and to document on multiple tasks, yet guaranteeing accurate reflection of a patient's need for ICU nursing care and differentiating patients based on those needs is vital. Worktime studies have shown that it takes less than 60 seconds to classify a patient with partament. Given that nurses will now be required, under the legislation, to classify more often than they are now, I again encourage a valid yet simplified approach. We at the Brigham evaluated acuity tools and determined that partament best met our needs. To force us to use the indicators out frontier, now of which are included in the partament tool, would mean that we would have to abandon all the great work done and start from scratch. This would negate many of the benefits and uses we gain from our current system, including the ability to benchmark. I urge you to reconsider and not mandate indicators, but instead mandate a thorough evaluation process for selecting a tool. I agree that external factors are the indicators of staff nurse workload that described in Section 807, Part 4B of the proposed regulations should also be included in an acuity system. Examples include the geography of a unit, expertise of the nursing staff, and availability of ancillary staff, family meetings, bedside procedures, and extensive teaching with patients and families. Finally, the tool should have the ability to differentiate between a one-to-one and a one-to-two patient care assignment based on hours of care derived from patient classification that's described in Section 807, Part 5. Though we do not currently use partament in this fashion, their statistical and programming teams are working on an addendum to their assignment module to make this possible. Thank you for the opportunity to make your remarks.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind staying for a moment, we have a couple of questions. As we're asking the questions, this will be slightly awkward, but I'm realizing that the microphone is not reaching to you, so people at the far ends may not be able to hear you, and it looks like it's a little uncomfortable. So the solution, I think, Colleen, is going to be to bring the tables a little closer to us. You may not love that, but it means that it's just the cord. Excellent. What an easy fix. Okay, so that'll make it easier for you to be heard. Dr. Allen has a question. I have a question, and there may be other questions on the panel as well, so if you wouldn't mind waiting for just a moment. Dr. Allen.
Thank you for your testimony. I have a question for you, Shan, or actually two questions. One is, you talked about making a tool that's portable between units, but how can the same tool be used for, say, an adult surgical ICU and, say, a NICU?
Sure. And to be honest, we've done a lot of work with our NICU to make sure that the tools meet their needs. So for instance, an adult in a surgical ICU may be monitored every 30 minutes because they have an unstable heart rhythm. A baby in the NICU may have the same unstable heart rhythm, and it's also being monitored every 30 minutes. And so the workload is the same, but the patient population is different? Yes. We did have our U.S. come to speak with our NICU group recently and asked them what they would change, if we could change anything about the tool. And really, it was about the verbiage. So we have an indicator that we call rehabilitative in the adult population. They wanted it called developmental needs, and so partament was willing to change that for them. So it's really about, more about how do we apply it to that patient population, though the needs are slightly different, they can be captured within the same tool.
Yes, yes. Sorry, thank you. And your written testimony, you could give some examples. I don't have the authority to mention it, but if you could give some examples, it would be, that would be helpful.
Sure.
The other is, could you give an example of where the indicators that we have set up differ from what you would like to see?
Yes, so in the indicators that are listed in the draft regulations, that lists each system individually, so respiratory, cardiac, renal, whereas partament's research has shown that you don't need to individually mark each one of those in a tool. They can be rolled up to the most frequent assessment that you're doing, and that accurately captures workload. So rather than have the nurse have to click off each individual assessment, they can just check what system, or what is the most frequent assessment that they're doing for that period of time, and then that accurately captures workload.
Yes, would you pass the mic down? And Paul, will you speak into the microphone?
Just to clarify, your understanding or reading of the regulations currently drafted, when you look at 807, 4A, which tells you of list the various clinical domains, the language is...
Paul, I don't think that they have some language in front of them. Could you read it?
Okay, I'll try. I'm gonna try to read it. Supports appropriate to the ICU patient in the ICU in which the acuity tool would be deployed clinical domains, such as, I'm focusing on the word "such as." My question is, do you read the current regulation, which includes the word "such as," and then the following elements? To be mandatory of those elements or suggestive? I just want to make sure I understand your current reading.
I personally read it as mandatory, but I think it's interpreted.
That was not the intent. Did you want to comment on that? No, that was the comment. Anyone else attend at the table? Okay. I just had one or two clarifying questions. The first is, one of the pieces of commentary we've gotten back from stakeholders throughout this process has been the question of the regulations specifying that this be done by hospital or by hospital system. Do the Brigham and the Mass General, as part of a system, use the same tool or different tools?
All of the partners' facilities use partament.
Okay, thank you. And Sharon, you mentioned that there were elements in the regulatory process that are not included in partament. If you had to just take a guess, what percentage of those elements would have to be, kind of what percentage of partament would have to be changed in order to meet our requirements?
I don't know about the percentage, but some examples would be the by-system documentation as well as age. We don't use ages as defining indicator in partament, so that would require not only a change to the tool, but something, you know, especially in the NICU, how do we gauge age as age based on, you know, there would have to be a broader definition or a more specific definition, is that when they were born, is that how old they are today, that sort of thing. And so we're not quite sure how we would incorporate that into the system, is that something we have.
Terrific, thank you. Any other questions? Great, thank you very much. Okay, the next panel up is the MNA panel headed by Claire O'Connell, and after that will be the MHA Organization of Nurse Leaders panel headed by Pat Noga. You must be Claire. Wonderful. Would you like to start, or do you have an order in which you prefer to go? Okay, okay, great.
I'll go first then. My name is Dan Mark. I'm an ICU nurse at the Brigham Women's Hospital at the Bockham Campus. I'm actually in a better position, I think, than most positions, because our management team actually does look at the nursing staff and ask, how can you take one patient, can you take two patients? We really work well together, I think, in that aspect of the ICU. I'm looking here at the artory, and I'm seeing staff nurses on this side, MNA nurses, I mean, management on this side. That's very unfortunate. We all should be on the same page, looking for the same goal of getting the best patient care that we can provide, you know? That was just my little comment, I'm sorry. The two things with the acuity tool, one thing is, I think we've got to remember that it is just a tool. It is not the actual decision maker, like what we do at the Friends of Bockham. We look at the, we do have an acuity tool, we use, like this woman that sat in the seat said, we use the partament, but we also work with management, with our own staff, to say, hey, can you take one patient, can you take two patients? And it usually works very well. You know, you don't want to go at the end of the day going like this, oh my God, I pushed through that day and I saved that patient, or I killed that patient because I had too many patients. You're always afraid of that, you know? And you don't want to go home like that. You want to go home saying, I did a damn good job, you know? And that's what you want. You've got to remember, it's your mom, or your dad, or your brother, or your sister that's sitting on that bed. The other thing that I'd like to comment is, with this acuity tool committee at each hospital, it does have to have more staff nurses, because it is the staff nurse that does take care of the patient. Yes, management does have to oversee it, but I think unfortunately, most management or a lot of management, they're not in that, that system anymore. They forget how it is to take care of patients. So you do need that staff nurse's opinion. And you've got to remember also that each staff nurse is different. One's going to be a real strong staff nurse, and one's not going to be as strong, where that one person could probably take one patient very carefully as the stronger staff nurse can take care of those two. Just those are the things that I'd like you to remember when you do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Claire O'Connell. I'm a registered nurse in a burn trauma surgical ICU here in Boston, in the MNA for 27 years. I do have some serious concerns about the regulations as they are currently drafted that state, where it states that the nurses can be assigned one or two patients without reflecting the intent of the law, which is a default assignment of a one-to-one patient with the option of moving to a second patient. Basically, the stability of the patient isn't always looked at, and a lot of the things that he just said is so true. And just regards to management, one of the things that I've said every time I've, this is my third time speaking, I will cry, is that every time I've come in, I have said the same thing that you said. It's on one side, and... There's a one side, and the nurse is at the bedside on the other side. And I do think it's really sad, because it hasn't always been that way. People have always kind of worked together, and, "What can we do?" And you're fortunate to work with your floor. Mine's okay, but, you know, the work that the management has to do these days, they're not at the bedside. They can't be, because they're in meetings literally all day long. So they're getting from either the charge nurse, who could be really strong, who might not be strong, or just the ongoing of the unit. They just don't, not that they don't have a pulse on it, but they're not there to see what is actually going on. On my unit in Toronto, you could get a phone call to say, "There's a big accident coming. You're getting three patients." Well, my manager's at, you know, at a meeting, because she has to be. It's not because she may not want to be, but she has to be to continue with the flow of the unit. So we can call her, and just, I just wanted to make that point too. And I just wish that we could all kind of work together a little bit better, because it seems like it's an us against them, a plaintiff and defendant. It just seems like if we could all just kind of sit in a circle, hold hands, and maybe... I know it sounds silly. It sounds really silly, but it's very basic. We're taking care of patients, and I take care of every patient as if they're a family member, a friend, or you, whoever. And that I'm giving the care that I want to give. And if you can't do that, it just becomes a problem. So the tool that we have, we really have to go by the nurses at the bedside to say, "What do you think?" And to be honest, from my experience of 27-plus years, the nurse would probably take on more than another person would. You know, we're the ones that will say, "Okay, oh, my God, I haven't gone to the bathroom in 12 hours, or I can't believe it." But you're going to go do whatever you need to do for that patient before you go into your bladder. So the nurses I just find at the bedside are so committed and just so want to be doing the right thing by the patient. And if they feel that something's not right, something's not right. Something's just definitely not right. And if we're saying that the tool isn't working properly, it's not that we want to kibosh everything that either management or hospital, or whatever they're doing. We're not looking to spend more money. We're not looking to not work more. I haven't worked harder than I have in all my years of nursing, because the acuity of the patients have gone up, the technology has gone up. And it's just, I don't want to say you have to get some break, but it's just, if we're saying that it's not working, let's work together. And, you know, I might have a better idea, because I'm at the bedside, than someone running the tool. It might be an IT person running the tool. This looks good. But you know what? It might look good, but when you actually go to practice, it doesn't work. It absolutely doesn't work. So nurses have to be, whatever panel, however they're going to make the tool, it definitely has to be, I think, the majority of nurses. Not to say we outnumber management or whoever, but to just say, "We are there, and we will tell you if it doesn't work." And if it does work, we're like, "Oh, my God, that's perfect. That's what we want to use. That's great."
No need to apologize. Your time is up. That was great. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Fabiana Wern. I am a nurse in a care unit at Boston Michael Center. And I am a managed practice nurse, student at Regis College. And I have some colleagues here as well who are listening to this. I've been working in ICUs for 15 years, and I currently work at Boston Michael Center, and I'm a mixed ICU on the Harrison Avenue campus. I am pleased to report that my facility, for the most part, has been honoring the new law and my assessment of patients, in my assessment of patients, so that patients who should be one-to-one on an assignment are provided with the assignment that they need ahead. This is the law, and I support it strongly. I am here today to speak to an important step of this law, which is the process for creating hospital-specific acuity tools for nurses to use as a need to their assessment and determine if and when he or she can accept a second patient. I see a number of problems with your draft regulation regarding this process. First of all, our regulations need to be very clear that the acuity tool is just that, a tool for the staff nurse to use in making their assessments. No tool can be exhaustive, and there are, will always be unique situations where the nurses on the unit determine a patient acuity because of the unique circumstances and cannot be doubled. These regulations need to be clear that the nurse's assessment is the final judgment in this situation, regardless of tool. Second, the regulations need to be ensured that the committees that are formed at each hospital have a majority of members who are frontline staff nurses, the nurses who actually care for these patients. We know that these patients need the bedside nurses. We cannot trust management, who are too often more concerned with finances and the bottom line, to have control over the determination of acuity. This was a law written specifically to avoid that influence and to focus on the needs of patients. Third, these committees that develop the acuity tool cannot just be advisory in nature. They must have ultimate authority to create the tool that is submitted to the Department of Public Health for certification. Finally, as a union member, I want to ensure that this process recognizes the rights of me and my colleagues to determine our working conditions and safe practice for our patients. As such, I want my union, working with me and my colleagues, to be able to select nurses who participate in this committees, not management.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Claire especially, thank you for your plea. It was very well stated. And if you would wait just a moment to make sure that people don't have questions. Before we go to questions, I also would like to thank the last several panels for commenting specifically on the acuity tool and both the nurse and the nurse manager's role in assessing the patient. That is what we're here for today. You've given us some very thoughtful, sophisticated feedback, and we're grateful for that. Okay, questions? David has a question.
Thank you. Dan and Claire, you both mentioned that you work at an institution that has an acuity tool in place, although it's not used for staffing, as we heard from the previous panel. I'm wondering, in your experience or from your college experience, what was the input of staff ICU nurses that went into some of the adjustments that was previously mentioned to Quadramed? And was that your input included in that process?
We didn't have any. And one of the things that we found out, not me personally, but it was passed down, is that the acuity tool that we have, if, I guess, you purchase a package, I guess is how they do it, and there were certain things that weren't purchased, whether, I'm not exactly sure why. I can't speak for it. But it was found out that if we had purchased the full package of the options, it would have given a better reflection of... So that was brought up, I believe, to our hospital. Again, it wasn't found out by me, but it was passed down, and it was, in fact, that was the truth. And whether it was that they didn't, we needed it, or what, but that was found out. Let's see yours.
Thank you. And I don't think I really know your answer either. I don't know who designed the Quadramed for the Boffner Hospital. I am currently sitting on the Quadramed meeting now, but I've only been on, like, for a half a year. And most of us is looking at reliability and all that other type of stuff. We're not really looking at changing. I know there are upgrades, and they want to do some upgrades, but we haven't done it yet, because we're going through a whole new documentation now, so everything's kind of been put on hold. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next. So the MHA Organization of Nurse Leaders is next, Pat Noga's panel. And then after that, we will have the ANA panel led by Tara Tean. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Okay. Pat, would you like to start?
Great. Good afternoon, Commissioners and HPC staff. I am Pat Noga, Vice President and Clinical Affairs at the Massachusetts Hospital Association. I am a registered nurse for over 30 years with experiences as a staff nurse in the medical intensive care unit and with responsibility and oversight as a director for five intensive care units. This panel will focus on nurse staffing quality measures with recommendations for their collection and reporting, as well as a focus on the definition of the ICU. First, we thank you for the proposed selection of the three following quality measures, which are nationally endorsed and recognized as nurse-sensitive quality indicators that help reduce hospital-acquired conditions leading to harm. Central line-associated bloodstream infection, catheter-associated urinary tract infection, pressure ulcer prevalence. However, we do ask the HPC to amend the fourth measure from patient fall rate to the rate of patient falls with injury, as this would allow the measure to be consistent with the nationally endorsed quality measure that tracks actual injuries relating to falls in an ICU. These nurse staffing quality measures are directly impacted by the quality of nursing care. They also have applicability across all ICU, adult ICU settings. All nurses are actively involved in the continuous monitoring of these nurse-sensitive measures every day, and they're able to make important contributions to healthcare quality and patient outcomes in our ICUs. Second, collaboration on a common quality measurement and reporting framework led by and consistent with national alliances is also important to advance a shared agenda for quality improvement, reducing onerous and duplicate reporting requirements and minimizing confusion. Therefore, we urge the HPC to consider that any collection and recording of both nurse staffing compliance and the quality measures will be completed through one system, either the DPH's healthcare facility reporting system or the Patient Care Link Quality and Safety website. We ask the HPC to consider using Patient Care Link for, among the following reasons: It's a public access website that's committed to healthcare quality, transparency, and patient safety. It's a central data repository which serves as a monitor and transparent method to report progress. Organization leaders must provide attestation when submitting results, and the system's already in place and would require less administrative time and cost for state agencies to establish, and the results from Patient Care Link can be easily shared with regulatory agencies. Thirdly, we firmly believe that Chapter 155 applies only to those areas specifically defined as an ICU within 105 CMR, 130, 020. Because NICU and PICU are separately defined in other areas of the DPH regulations, and burn units are not defined or referenced as ICUs, these units should not be directly impacted or governed by the implementation of Chapter 155. There are unique clinical, operational, and legal considerations related to NICUs and PICUs. Details regarding these unique considerations will be further detailed by my accompanying colleagues from South Coast Health System at Israel Deaconess Medical Center and Bay State Medical Center. Thank you for the opportunity to offer testimony on these topics.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelle Aguirre. I'm currently a staff nurse in an adult ICU at South Coast Health System. I have been an intensive care unit nurse for 13 years. I would like to take this opportunity to discuss two of the proposed quality measures: catheter-associated urinary tract infection and patient falls in the adult ICU setting. I ask that the HPC amend the measure of falls to falls with injury as we currently track falls with injury in our ICU. Falls are a significant cause of injury and preventable harm. Bedside nurses have an integral role in managing and monitoring quality measures, such as COTI and falls with injury. And by selecting these nurse-sensitive measures, nurses have a voice with their organization to improve patient outcomes. Nurses have a significant role in preventing injury, and in our daily practice, the staff nurse is involved in the continuous monitoring of patient safety. Catheter-associated urinary tract infection or COTI prevention is key to our nursing practice on an ongoing basis. As a bedside nurse, I am part of a multidisciplinary team, and selecting the COTI measure empowers nurses to work together to improve patient safety. In my unit, we have a COTI prevention team made up of nurses that assess the daily need of an indwelling catheter to improve upon a number of preventable incidents. We also utilize a COTI prevention board for all staff to come involved and a motivator for quality improvement. Our catheter-associated urinary tract infection prevention practices work. Urinary tract infections are the most common type of hospital-acquired infections. One prevention strategy we currently use is shift rounding, where nurses determine the need for an indwelling urinary catheter. We have inclusion/exclusion criteria that are discussed, and if the criteria are not met, the catheter is removed. At my institution, we are currently benchmarking that in the national standards, and we strive continuously to implement prevention strategies to improve patient outcomes. I would recommend the falls with injury measure over falls rate measure, because the focus is on both preventing falls and protecting patients from injury. We have designed preventative practices to reduce the number of injuries due to falls. We currently have a zero-fall rate in the ICU and have attained this rate by implementing standard fall risk assessments upon admission and during every shift. We conduct our rounds to focus on patients to constantly assess and determine patient fall risk of injury. We use yellow bracelets to identify high-risk patients and have their events in chair lungs to help prevent falls with injury. We also conduct bedside reporting and documentation that allows for collaborative assessment between staff nurses and nurse managers. Nurses play a large role in preventing patients from experiencing adverse events during hospitalization. And the quality measures selected by the HPC enable nurses to help improve patient safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just a time reminder, you have two minutes apiece.
Good afternoon. I'm James Malcolm. I became a NICU nurse in 1976. During my career, I have witnessed many advances in neonatal care, which have led to improved outcomes and survival for NICU infants. I was a clinical nurse for 25 years, a nurse manager in the NICU for 12 years, and am currently the clinical director for the Perinatal Service at Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center. I contend the new ICU staffing law inappropriately included NICUs. AWON, the Association of Women's Health, obstetric, and neonatal nursing, developed standard guidelines for staffing for NICUs which align closely with the ICU staffing law, which is one-to-one or one-to-two assignments for Level III NICU patients. The goal is to staff units according to volume and acuity. Where the tension arises is when you have unanticipated admissions. The ICU staffing law states the ratios are ineffective at all times. This mandate may have unintended consequences of compelling NICUs to decline transports in of critically ill infants from community hospitals or to transfer out critical infants to other NICUs due to a mismatch in staffing. Women with high-risk pregnancies often have their care transferred to tertiary care centers to have access to advanced fetal maternal medicine and immediate access to Level III NICU care. This is a brief possible scenario. A woman pregnant with 25 twins is transferred to a tertiary care center due to a medical condition which could be life-threatening to both her and her infants. An urgency section is performed, and the infants each weighing one and a half pounds are admitted to the NICU. The mother is medically unstable. She's requiring ICU care. At this time, the NICU can only accept one more Level III patient due to staffing. This would require a NICU to transfer out one of those infants. Transporting critically ill premature infants in the first few hours of life has been shown to have a negative impact on long-term health and survival. Not only does this type of transport have a negative impact on the infant's health, but separates a family at a very critical time. The family is now being cared for in three separate ICUs in two different hospitals. NICUs do not have a holding area for patients. There isn't an ED, PACU, or similar unit to care for NICU patients. The mandate of the ICU staffing law at all times places an undue hardship on NICU patients, their families, and staff. NICUs are staffed by a team of caregivers who possess the expertise to care for the smallest, most vulnerable patients in the hospital and the compassion to care for the entire family. As a nurse leader, when faced with these situations, I work with the NICU team to assess all patients in the NICU, other infants who could be transferred back to community hospitals. Where can we bring in and deploy additional staff? The staffing discrepancy may be short-term, but this would require a critical infant to be transferred, which could impact the outcome. I ask for a reconsideration of mandatory staffing at all times for NICUs and to allow NICU teams to make the decisions about the care of all their patients.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dale Poretto. I am the manager of the NICU at Bay State Medical Center. I've been a nurse for 39 years, and I have managed the NICU for the last 10 years, as well as being a NICU nurse for many of those years before that. I currently hold national certification in neonatal nursing, as well as in management, and I regularly participate in the care of the infants in our unit. I am here today to request that the HPC clarify the definition of an ICU to ensure that it does not apply to the NICU level of care. Currently, Massachusetts has 10 designated Level III neonatal intensive care units. The unique structure of the NICU is demonstrated by the following. The unique structure of the NICU is demonstrated by the following: being in a state of constant readiness, accepting anticipated and unanticipated admissions, accepting internal and external transfers, accepting patients from multiple entry points, and also providing specialized nursing competencies to ability to reallocate nurse resources to meet our patient needs. Most known for the exceptional care of the premature infant, the NICU is also the only place a critically ill infant can get admitted, full-term or otherwise. I'd like to share with you a current case study to demonstrate the NICU's unique features. On March 6th of this year, a full-term infant girl was born and admitted to our NICU. Her tone at delivery was poor, and she did not breathe. The labor and delivery staff nurses provided artificial breathing via an Ambu mask for a couple of minutes, and then the NICU team was called. Our response time to the delivery by hotline was used to call the NICU team, which included one nurse practitioner, one respiratory therapist, and two of the NICU nurses that were on staff. These two nurses are assigned at the beginning of the shift, and they will respond to any emergency, while other nurses will cover their assignments for the time that they are down in delivery. Baby girl was intubated and brought upstairs to the NICU. If she had been born in another hospital, the transport team would have had to go and get her. These also were nurses assigned from the team of nurses that are on staff that day. Baby girl received resuscitation and responded slowly. She was placed on total body cooling. The first few hours of her life, she needed two nurses. For the next three days, she received one-to-one nursing care. She had multiple interventions, and her family could only touch her gently. Mom was taught to pump milk to be fed through a tube. The baby was having seizures, and continuous EEG wires were connected to monitor her activity. An EKG revealed slight damage to her heart.
Sheila, I'm going to have to interrupt you. If you could just cut to your final point, I'd be grateful.
So on March 17th, she was discharged home, and she still had many medical needs. And the point is that in the beginning of her stage, she needed that two-to-one and then one-to-one, but there's no place else that a NICU baby can go to another facility to learn, so parents can learn that they had to bring her home on oxygen with medication for seizures and many other things. And so the NICU care is different than ICU care where a patient would graduate and go to a different unit prior to discharge.
Thank you. I'm really grateful to the comments that, for the comments that you've made today. I think you know that the commission and this committee in particular is really wrestling with these definitions, and I think, you know, the legal staff has been particularly helpful to me in understanding kind of what's the legislation say? What do we need to do by statute? What does the DPH, kind of how do they define an intensive care unit? Are NICUs and PICUs in or out? So there are some conflicting directions, and we will make the best policy call we can on this. But very helpful to have your input. I'm sorry to interrupt your story, but I think that we need to move on. Before we do, any specific questions from, yes?
I first want to say is I've been trying to educate myself, the whole regulation. For me, the NICU issue is its own, is its own set of challenges and concerns. Here's the reality question I have. If you look at those nine or 10 Level III units and you look at the reality of how staffing dynamically tends to work now, let's say over the course of a week or a month, let's say a month, will it be common that because of how transfers are coming in or out or et cetera, that a nurse would be assigned more than two patients in a NICU, let's say with some stable twins? I want to get a reality understanding of that, how it works presently.
Right now, we do staff with a predicted power level of what we consider our average daily census, and then there might be times where we do have to cross-cover each other till the next shift where we can call an on-call nurse or to beef up the staff or cancel down, you know, if our census falls down. But according to our national guidelines, our perinatal guidelines, we do have babies in the unit that do fall within our guidelines that could be cared for three-to-one, and we do match those up properly as well.
So at present, that's not an uncommon issue that not only yours, but I imagine most on NICU's face in terms of the dynamics of the NICU care.
Correct.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Thank you very much. We're going to have a slight shift in the order. Representative Garlic is here, and we invite her to come up and testify. She'll be pleased to know that I actually moved you from Needham to Newton, but you were moved back again. Really delighted to have you here. And right after, right after your testimony, then we'll invite Kyle Murray from Senator Mark Pacheco's office to read a letter from him, and then we'll go back to our normal order. So welcome. Pleased to have you here.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon to the Health Policy Commission and to Health Policy Commission staff, and I want to express all my respect for the folks here and thank you for this privilege of being able to speak. We are in session at 2 o'clock, so I deeply appreciate this.
So you can only speak for an hour?
I can only speak for an hour. But you can call me later. First, my name is Denise Garlic. I'm a state representative from the 13th Norfolk. I am both a nurse and a legislator. I want to share with you, as a nurse, that I have worked in ICUs over the course of a career that began in 1975. I was an ICU nurse in both medical and surgical ICUs in the VA system. I worked in a non-union community hospital special care unit. I worked in a non-union ICU in a rural hospital, and I spent many, many years in an ICU in an acute care hospital in Boston. In addition to that, as a legislator, I just wanted to share with you, when you look at the actual legislation that was passed on this ICU regulation, in the space for the Speaker of the House, I was given the privilege to sign this bill. It's the Senate President's name, the Governor's name, and my name. When I tell you that I know what's in this bill, I know what's in this bill, and I stake my own name and my own career on it. As I told you about my many ICU experiences, I want to share with you, listening here this afternoon, the issue that you are wrestling with around the ICU, whether this applies to NICUs. In all of those experiences I had, in all of those settings I had, my goal was to be a NICU nurse, and after all of those experiences, you know, I still never had the guts to go into the NICU because those patients are so vulnerable. Those are the ones, 10 cc's of fluid can be too much. 10 cc's of fluid wouldn't cover the top of your fingernail. So I want you to know that, of course, this law would apply to the ICUs. Hi, this is Diana Disoglio, who is our representative. Thank you, Diana. So as you consider these proposed regulations, I know why this room is packed, and I am grateful that this is not the first hearing I testify at, but the second I testify with you while I'm in the fall. And I think this is a tremendous commitment from the Health Policy Commission to make sure that all voices are heard and all viewpoints are heard. And I know that there are so many issues at stake here, and in fact, I have respect for all of them. I know that there was an arbitrary stance of the hospital administration around the issues of management rights, and in fact, that is what you are grappling with when you hear from the hospital administration. I appreciate that. I know there is an unceasing and ever-increasing strident call from the nurses in Massachusetts, union and non-union, asking for more safe environments in which they can practice nursing in the way that they have been educated to practice. I know that this is a sentimental event for HPC. In our Commonwealth, we have dealt with access. I served on the Healthcare Financing Committee when we developed the statute around cost containment, and now HPC is being asked to deal with the biggest issue of all: quality of care. This is the issue that this ICU regulation is about, that you're being asked to deal with. And this decision, the fourth stakeholder in this, of course, is the patient, and I want to tell you that without drama, I am telling you that an ICU nurse is the difference between life and death for a patient. An ICU patient is so vulnerable, is so fragile. Circumstances can change so quickly that the presence of a nurse is what makes a difference. It is, in fact, the reason the patient is in the intensive care unit. Those very words, intensive care. As we look at the proposed regulation, I want to thank you for your work, and I want to specifically cite the fact that this directive, that this law, and the limits that it sets in place, this work, you have tried so very hard to make sure that that is so clear that you are following the directive of the law. But there are four issues for which I am concerned. The first is around, which I believe sometimes with the very best of intentions, we get an outcome that we didn't intend. This law was about one-to-one nursing care for a patient in the intensive care unit. Any reasonable person knows that there might be some instance when it could be one-to-two. The patient is ready to move out of the intensive care unit, you know, for that brief period of time while they're waiting for the bed on the floor, you know, that patient may be more stable. I think the HPC, in its desire to be clear, became somewhat ambiguous because the repetition of one-to-one and one-to-two of the law makes it sound like, in your regulation, I'm sorry, in your proposed regulation, makes it sound like these are equal events. It was never intended to be an equal event. The law was written for one-to-one nursing care with respect to the fact, in rare, rare instances, it might be one-to-two. The second issue was around the fact that the proposed regulation seems to indicate that the acuity tool could be a substitute for the nurse's clinical judgment. That was never the intention, and when we were discussing this, in my mind and in the mind of my colleagues who voted unanimously on this bill, there was a hierarchy of decision-making. And in fact, the acuity tool is there just as an adjunct to the nurse's clinical judgment. This was meant to be a reasoned discussion between the nurse and the person who is making the assignment, and if there was a disconnect, the acuity tool would serve as a template. In no way does a tool ever substitute for anyone's judgment. It's a way that you can structure a conversation in a productive, positive way. The third issue that I was concerned about was that the proposed regulation seems to indicate that the nurse manager is the arbiter of any disagreement, and that was not intended. It was intended that when there was disagreement in the hierarchy of decision-making, it is hoped that two professionals looking at a situation are going to make the same decision. If they do not, and they have to have a conversation, they turn to the acuity tool as a template. When that decision can still not be reached, it is on the hospital management to make that final decision. It is not the nurse manager who is the arbiter, because that doesn't make any sense. It is probably the nurse manager who's making the assignment. So we have to be very careful about how we're doing that. And finally, and I understand how you got there, and I respect it, but there is this talk in the proposed regulation about the advisory committee. The advisory committee actually is something that is, is, I think, a dangerous, a dangerous proposal because it undermines the intent of the law, and I'll tell you why. In my experience, and for years and years, the only committee that would work well is a labor management committee in which labor gets to choose its own people and management chooses its own people, and it's equal numbers, and decisions can be made, and we understand how that decision is going to be finally arrived at. If you make an advisory committee that is chosen by a certain party, who those members are going to be, who's going to participate, it actually is a straw man. The people on the advisory committee don't have power to make those kind of decisions and speak for other people. I understand how you got there, and I appreciate that, but I just wanted to put that warning. I have served on hand-picked committees where you can be standing on the table naked screaming, "No, no, no," and people will say, "Well, she was present at the MAGA meeting." So I'm really asking you to think very carefully about that, even though I know your intention was good. I want you to know, this proposed regulation, your hard work, and I know we tossed you the hardest ball of all, I know we did as a legislature, because quite frankly, we couldn't figure it out. But it was a very tough choice for the nurses and for the hospital administrators who agreed to this legislation. It was clear in that language what we were agreeing to. We were agreeing to one-to-one nursing care in the intensive care unit, and that, that legislation was passed unanimously in the House of Representatives. Any rate, any deviation from that intent of the law would be a travesty here, and I ask you not to do that, although I know how careful and reasoned you are trying to be. I ask you to return to that language, return to that intent that is so clear, and be ensure for the patients of the Commonwealth, for the smallest, tiniest, most vulnerable patients who now can weigh less than a pound, I'm sure you know, in a neonatal intensive care unit. When I began my nursing career, we didn't think babies less than five pounds would survive. Today, babies less than a pound are in the neonatal intensive care unit, and they do survive, and they do do well if they have good enough nursing care. And across the age continuum, from, from people who suffer trauma to the people with the most grave illness, the most severe surgeries, the presence of a nurse, that one-to-one nurse in an intensive care unit makes the difference for life and death. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have just a moment to stay, I do want to welcome Representative Diana Disoglio from Methuen. And let me invite Kyle Murray from Senator Pacheco's office to come if you're still, if you're here. Great. Terrific. Why don't you come and join the panel as well? And Representative Disoglio, before I ask you for your testimony, I did want to ask a question of Representative Garlic. The panel before you testified at length about the sort of controversy we're facing around including NICUs and pediatric intensive care units, to some degree burn units, but certainly NICUs and PICUs, and, and they had some strong arguments for why they should not be included. And you seemed, at least as I listened to you, to feel quite passionately that the intent of the legislation was that they would be. I don't want to put words into your mouth, so I wonder if you would just comment on what you were thinking when you were putting that part of the law together in terms of scope of coverage?
So let me tell you a story about the title of this bill. When, after all of the hard work around the body of the language of the bill was done and negotiations had taken place, and they were taking place formally and informally and were very intense, it came down to what we were going to title this bill because the bill was being passed with, with another bill, that that title of the other bill no longer fit what the content of this language was. We had taken a bill from the Joint Committee on Public Health that dealt with folic acid, and we were attaching this language so we could pass it in this timely manner because the intensity of these negotiations was so strong and the timing was of essence. So we certainly weren't going to title this bill the Folic Acid Bill. The title of this bill is, deals with the staffing in all intensive care units in all hospitals of the Commonwealth. And that, that wording, I know there are people who are your staff who know that every word counts. word counts. That wording on all was actually a discussion that happened on the rostrum in which I personally would not give up that word at all. All intensive care units in all hospitals of the Commonwealth. That means neonatal intensive care units up to any, any level of intensive care units. When we say all intensive care units, we mean all intensive care units. Separate than being a legislator, as a nurse, I am stunned, and, and I wasn't even prepared that this would be part of our discussion today. It would never dawn on me that anyone would seek to exclude a neonatal intensive care unit. And I won't repeat my words, but the patients are so vulnerable. These little ones are so small. The slightest mistake, the slightest deviation from care, the slightest moment in which that nurse is not making, paying attention for any other reason, God forbid it's another patient, is, could be devastating. And I would remind people that for any patient we take care of, we are taking care of their loved ones as well, who are also very needy. The nurse in a neonatal intensive care unit is caring not only for that infant, but she is caring for that parent or that loved, that loved one who cares deeply about what's happening to that patient. That's time-intensive, that's labor-intensive. That can be done with her hand on the incubator, but it has to happen as well. So anyone that wants to exclude the neonatal intensive care unit, it just baffles me as a nurse.
Great, thank you. Representative Disotio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the sake of time, I'm just going to submit a written testimony. I think that Representative Garlick explained her position very well. I stand strongly with Representative Garlick's viewpoint on this, so I will submit my written testimony. And thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. I'm very grateful that you came. Okay. Let's see. Mr. Murray, and you are here representing Senator Pacheco.
That is correct. Thank you for allowing me to testify today, and thank you for all your hard work on these regulations. Senator, Chief, my name is Kyle Murray, I'm the Legislative Director and General Counsel for Senator Pacheco. He wanted to be here today, but unfortunately he had a previous commitment, so sent him instead. And so he just asked that I read this letter, this testimony on his behalf. On June 26, 2014, the, 2014, the Massachusetts Senate and House enacted H 4228, an act relative to patient limits in all hospital intensive care units. This bill was a result of a compromise on a piece, my own piece of legislation, S 557, an act relative to patient safety. As you're discussing the promulgation of regulations governing the implementation of this law, is my hope that these regulations reflect the legislative intent behind the law. As the chief sponsor of the original legislation, and advocate who was involved in the enactment of the final legislation until the very end, I believe I have a very good understanding of the legislative intent. It's clear that the legislature intended to have a one-patient-to-one-nurse assignment with the ability to move to a two-patient-to-one-nurse assignment based upon the stability of the patients as assessed by the direct care nurses in the intensive care unit with the assistance of an acuity tool. I'm concerned that the proposed regulations do not follow this legislative intent, as the acuity tool was intended only to supplement the clinical judgment of the staff nurses, not replace it. Further, the staff nurses were supposed to be involved in both the development and approval of the tool. I commend the Health Policy Commission for its work on these regulations. However, I ask that the regulations you promulgate follow the clear intent of the legislature. The legislature provided no exceptions to the law for a reason. I appreciate your favorable consideration of this matter. If you have any questions or require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact my office. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let me just ask the panel if you have any specific questions. Yes, Paul?
I guess I'll address this to Representative Garlick. Can I say, you know, as the consumer appointee, I think I share your interest and passion in safety for all of us in the Commonwealth, and, and fairly, you know, the nurses not be overworked, because that's both respecting its employees as well as relates to safety. I also say, though, that as a member of the commission focused on cost and quality of the state, I think, I, I, it's incumbent upon me to sort of look at all this in the context of those goals as well. But I just want to understand your, your one point, and it ties into your passion. Your concern ties to really patients who are critically ill, right? Is that any different than the critical care unit as a, as a physical unit? Or is there, is the real focus, the direction of what the legislature was trying to do was make sure that patients who are critically ill get the kind of nursing and, and safety related to that that they deserve and need?
So first, may I have permission to call you, Paul?
Sure.
Please call me today. First thing I, I want to deal with is that comment you made about overwork. You don't want the nurses to overwork. This isn't about nurses overworking. This isn't about making it somehow easier for the intensive care unit nurse to do her job. This is about the quality of job that the nurse can do. This truly is about safety and quality. And when you look at cost containment, and, and I have to tell you, I know I'm passionate about this, but I want you to know that I'm not one-sided about this. And I've, I've actually read the testimony from the fall, and I've grappled with this too, about knowing that, that, you know, where, where are the decisions made, and what decisions have to be? And I came up with two things. Number one, when hospital management says to us that they want the ability to be able to take a nurse from here and put her over here where she's needed, and move people around and be able to make those decisions, that would be extraordinary if there were a pool of nurses to do that. But when we talk about quality care, what you have to understand is every time a hospital manager says to you that they want the ability to move nurses around, it's a finite pool. They are always taking from someone to go someplace else. If you need my care at 10:15 in the morning, Paul, you're an intensive care unit patient, and we are one-to-one, how is it at 10:20 you don't need that anymore? I'm so confused by that. You know, if they wanted flexibility to move around nurses, and they had additional nurses that they were bringing in and moving, you know, in fact, some patients are going to need more than one nurse, a burn patient coming into a burn trauma unit, right? So they want to take a nurse, right? Because that patient needs more than one nurse. They're not taking them from the pool. They don't have the nurses in the back room that they're pulling out if they need them. They're taking them for a patient that at the beginning of that shift, it was decided needed one-to-one care. You know, that's a dangerous situation. So this isn't about overwork. This is about safe, quality care. The second thing is, you asked me around, are we talking about the critically ill patient? Or are we talking about a critical care unit? For a body that is concerned with cost containment, and I have thought about this for years, for a body that is concerned about cost containment, and I haven't thought about you guys for years, but I've thought about insurance companies for years, there should be no one in the intensive care unit that doesn't need intensive care. And if anyone is, then that actually is a violation of what the insurance company is paying for, and it should be something that the HPC should be unwilling to tolerate. If you are in an intensive care unit, you need intensive care treatment. And if not, anyone who's telling you, sitting here and telling you as a patient in an intensive care unit that doesn't need one-to-one care, is actually telling you that patient doesn't belong in the intensive care unit.
Representative, I just respond to that. Again, remember, I'm, I'm still educating myself here, but I have both visited and spoken, for example, let's use the NICU context, where there is one of a pair of twins, let's say, who clearly needs that NICU level of care. But I think, for example, you know, to not separate that twin from their other twin, which has lots of good meritorious reasons why you might want those two young babies together, if you really look at the, the care needs of that second twin, they might well have just been in a regular nursery on their own at, at, at certain moments, and those twins might well be kept together in an intensive care unit, as an example. So, so I just want to make sure that I'm, as I'm educating myself, I'm learning that there actually are moments, patients who are in intensive care unit settings, who, based on their own sort of medical needs, might not in fact require intensive care. But there's other, but there's other, you know, reasons that staffing can accommodate, you know, that, that kind of level of, of, of care. So I just want to...
So I'd respond to that just briefly. Number one, I'd respond as the mother of four children. It is hard for me to believe that two babies born in the same womb, that one needs intensive care unit and the other is perfectly fine. I think one is more vulnerable than the other. I think both those twins are vulnerable, to be fair. And then the second thought would be, as a legislator, that is such a unique and rare experience, I can't actually even think of, anytime I've heard of a twin that's born that is so vulnerable, they need intensive care unit, and the other twin is just fine, right? It would be unusual.
As a physician, there are, I'd be ever ready to further that pediatrician comment about this, which works for me.
Very, very. But it would be, I think, not the way the Health Policy Commission would want to structure a regulation for, for an instance, that would be so rare, and then would leave so many people vulnerable because of that. Just a thought. And, and Paul, I, I do want to take a moment to thank you, to have a consumer advocate, someone with your background, on the Health Policy Commission, I think is extraordinary.
This is a very difficult issue. I've really tried to, to my best to, to balance, but as you say, I think patient safety is the premier goal.
I do too. I do too. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us today, both of you. Okay. We'll continue now with the, we have a, a short or a small A&amp;A panel. Tara Tiede. And do you have a second person with you, Mira? Would you both like to come up together, or are you going to give the testimony? Terrific. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name is Tara Tiede, and I'm President of the American Nurses Association, Massachusetts. Can you hear me?
Yes, maybe if you see, these are slightly funky microphones, so if you'd just bring it a little closer, that would be great.
A&amp;A Massachusetts applauds the Health Policy Commission for recognizing the complexity of this issue of proposed regulations. We believe that by requiring a process for selection of an acuity tool rather than a specific acuity tool, the commission has recognized the diversity in hospitals and patients across Massachusetts. We agree with the proposed regulations outlining Section 8.05, Assessment of Patient Stability and Determination of Patient Assignment. We believe the regulations recognize the important role of the staff nurse in assessing patient acuity, while also recognizing the responsibility of the nurse manager in ensuring the safety of a cohort of patients within the intensive care unit. However, key changes are required to the draft regulations. In Section 8.04, the proposed regulations state the maximum patient assignment for each staff nurse may not exceed two ICU patients at any time during a shift. The proposed regulations should be revised to address emergency situations that require staffing to exceed a nurse-patient ratio of one-to-two patients. For example, a government declaration of an emergency, a catastrophic event, or a hospital emergency may require an exception to the law to ensure that all patients within the hospital, presenting to the hospital, are adequately cared for. Section 8.06 to B refers to the formation of an advisory committee. A&amp;A Mass applauds the acknowledgement of the role of the nurse in the development of the acuity tool, and recommends added, added, "Practicing in an intensive care unit after staff nurses to read, which committee shall be composed of at least 50% registered nurses who are not nurse managers, the majority of whom are staff nurses practicing in an intensive care unit." Records of compliance regarding Section 8.08, records of compliance, we would recommend maintaining records of staffing compliance for seven years for adults and 10 years for pediatrics to be consistent with the length of time that medical records are kept. Implementation timeline. Finally, the selection of an acuity tool requires a thoughtful process that is inclusive of the multiple stakeholders within an acute hospital. The October 1st, 2015 deadline for acute hospitals to submit a tool to a department does not provide sufficient time. The deadline for implementation should be extended to January 31st, 2016. In regards to the proposed nurse staffing quality measures, the American Nurses Association, Massachusetts believes an effective evaluation of staffing plans requires the consideration of both patient and staff measures. We support the Health Policy Committee's selection of the four quality measures. However, we believe hospitals should be required to report registered nurse hours per patient day as well. The inclusion of hours worked by RNs with direct patient care responsibility will build on the already self-reported measures of hours per patient day on the patient care line. In addition, because of the evidence and science and measurement quality is continually evolving, the regulations should address a process for reviewing and continually updating the reported measures. We recommend that an advisory committee be formed to oversee and monitor the quality measures. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony before this committee.
Thank you, and thank you for those very specific ideas and suggestions. That was helpful. Before you go, let me just check and make sure there isn't anyone on the panel who might have a question. Dr. Allen.
Hi, thank you. I'm sorry, you support an advisory panel for each hospital, or, no, for us?
Yes, for us. I, I think the measures are appropriate for this time, but I think this is an evolving area, and I think there needs to be a process for oversight to make sure that the quality measures that are used are the most accurate and most pertinent to ICU staffing.
Thank you very much. Let me now call the very patient, John Irwin, who's been bumped now several times over. John from the Council of Boston Teaching Hospitals. And after John, I will invite Judith Schindler-Rothchild from the B.C. School of Nursing to testify. Hi, John.
How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Irwin, and I am Executive Director of the Council of Boston Teaching Hospitals, which is a group of 14 Boston-area teaching hospitals. I thank you for the opportunity to offer comments on these important regulations. I appreciate the time, effort, and thoughtful approach that the commission and its staff have taken in developing these regulations. Our comments are offered with a desire to ensure that the regulations are workable and foster high-quality patient care in the Commonwealth. I will be submitting more detailed comments with specific recommendations for your consideration. But in the interest of time, I will highlight several areas of current concern, all of which have a common theme, and that is flexibility. Realize that these, if these regulations implement a statute, and as such, HPC must work within certain parameters, but I believe there are areas where the HPC can provide what we see as necessary flexibility, while still meeting both the spirit and the letter of the law, and above all, ensuring quality of care for our patients. The first issue is the inclusion of the phrases "at all times" and "at any time during a shift" in Section 804 of the proposed regulation. This requirement fails to take into account times when a nurse may need to step away from her duties, whether to consult with a doctor, another nurse, or meet with the patient's family. We recommend that the HPC include language that allows for some degree of flexibility and takes into account these everyday realities. Co-ventance member hospitals also believe that the proposed regulations concerning the development and implementation of the acuity tool are overly prescriptive and lack the flexibility necessary for hospitals to innovate and develop or purchase a tool that is right for their hospital and their patient population. Currently, few within 20% of the hospitals in the state use some acuity tool in their ICU. It's clear that much work needs to be done to develop, test, and implement acuity tools. As this is an emerging field, we recommend that the regulation, as much as possible, place into sub-regulatory guidance the specific details of elements of the acuity tool and issues to be considered during its development. Additionally, by setting limits on the composition of the advisory committee, the HPC does not allow the flexibility, if hospitals may feel necessary, to develop the best acuity tool in its ICU. Individuals who are at the forefront of new innovations in medical care may not be captured by the parameters set by the commission's proposed language. Therefore, we recommend that the HPC refrain from setting strict limits on the composition of the advisory committee. Again, we will submit specific suggestions in writing on these issues, as well as several others, but again, the theme is flexibility. And I realize I probably have three minutes, so I have no flexibility there, right?
Two minutes, 14 seconds. Would you like to continue?
That's okay.
Thank you.
On the quality measures, we are, we are in sync with what the NHA has said, and appreciating the fact that you've chosen quality measures that are nationally accepted, and with the exception of the change of the phraseology of "patient falls with injury," I think we're all on the same page there. So we appreciate that you are tracking as much as possible nationally accepted guidelines.
Right, and actually, I'm going to just pause because we do have a minute or two. We've certainly talked quite a bit on the committee and as a full commission about the distinction between falls and falls with injuries, and how that, how that should be phrased. Now, it's always very difficult to predict when someone's going to have a fall, or whether or not it's going to result in an injury. So it's another one of those areas that you think you have aptly titled, one which we need to be flexible. one which we need to be flexible. I did a moment ago ask Lois if she would just comment on kind of the research we've done on this and/or the other stakeholder comments. Would you be willing to do that? Because it's a subtlety that's quite important.
And as you know, we saw and received extensive feedback from all of the stakeholders, specifically on the quality measures. We received about 11 total measures collectively and evaluated those very carefully, including with the help of a nurse quality expert who assisted us. And actually, the falls with injury, it was a consensus measure, both from the MNA and the MHA and ONL and I believe the A&amp;A. And in consultation with our expert, we were convinced that broadening the measure to include all falls would in fact be more responsive to concerns in an ICU because any fall in an ICU, whether or not the patient was ultimately injured, could result in, with so many lines and things like that, could result in some sort of disruption of critical care. So that was the rationale that we used and really are looking forward to additional feedback. But that, if any fall with injuries of concern, particularly in an ICU, any fall would be of concern. It's something that we would want to track and collect as a measure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next person who will be testifying is Judith Schindler-Rothchild from the B.C. School of Nursing. Welcome.
Welcome.
And I'm sorry, I did say I would give slight advance notice to the next person. So after that, we'll invite Julie Pickham to come up and testify. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the Health Policy Commission this morning. My name is Judith Schindler-Rothchild. I have been practicing as a registered nurse in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for over 35 years. To my knowledge, I am the only health services researcher who has looked since the 1980s at the level of nurse staffing, quality outcomes, and the quality of nursing environment. And my written testimony has a list of my recent publications specifically about staffing in Massachusetts, quality indicators. Also, your concerns about efficiency. I've published extensively on that. So I would refer you to that. I would refer you to my prior testimony. Today, I'm focusing on the quality indicators. And I support the inclusion of the COTI score. I want to emphasize that the indicator should be the score, not the rate. CMS has changed that. My analysis, I did not find a relationship between nurse staffing and the rate, but we did with the score. Same with central line bloodstream infections, it should be the score, not the rate. And I have additional materials about why CMS changed those indicators so that they would be more reliable and valid. I do not support the inclusion of pressure ulcers. I think it is very important that you pick indicators that are sensitive to the population you're studying in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is the staffing in intensive care units in Massachusetts hospitals. And that's specifically what I looked at to see if there were significant relationships statistically with these indicators. Pressure ulcers is not in any hospital, and I have presented testimony before you, all different types of demographics. It's just not a sensitive indicator. Patient falls with injury, I would refer the committee to a CMS report that I cite in my written testimony. It's entitled Evidence-Based Guidelines for Selected Candidate and Previously Considered Hospital-Aquired Condition. They specifically provide a rationale of why you should have falls with trauma and injuries and not a generic indicator for a healthcare-acquired indicator that included all falls. So that's in a very recent CMS publication. I strongly believe that there are two other indicators you should include based on my analysis. All of the indicators that you have are hospital-acquired conditions. I believe you should include a patient safety indicator that I found was statistically significantly associated with nurse staffing and the quality of care. And that's referred to in the public as failure to rescue. It's commonly, the term that's used to identify that these are preventable deaths for surgical inpatients. I know it is just for surgical inpatients, but as you can see in my analysis, it came up as significant in coronary care units as well. The other is, and I appreciate that it has not been widely disseminated as a quality indicator, but adult patients who reported how often their pain was controlled, which is from the HCAP survey that's given to all CMS patients, more than any other indicator we looked at, that was significantly at the strongest levels associated with the quality of nurse staffing across all Massachusetts ICUs, across every type of Massachusetts ICU, by bed size, by teaching, non-teaching. And all of that I have available in writing for you. So, any questions?
Thank you. I do have a question. If you would just go back to your statement about pressure ulcers. And I don't have a strong opinion one way or another. You said they're really not relevant in Massachusetts.
Not sensitive. In Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts intensive care units. When I looked at the staffing in medical surgical units in Massachusetts hospitals, there was a linear relationship. So there was a linear relationship. In other words, the more patients nurses were taking care of, the more likely, the higher the rate of pressure ulcers. But there wasn't a statistically significant relationship. There wasn't even a linear relationship in Massachusetts intensive care units. So it's not sensitive to the quality of care Massachusetts intensive care units because it's not coming up as a problem. I think you've heard of the efforts by intensive care units to use best practices to prevent these indicators. When I've spoken to your staff about this, my reply to them was Massachusetts intensive care nurses are doing a terrific job with preventing pressure ulcers from occurring in ICUs. That's not true in Massachusetts medical surgical units necessarily, but in the ICUs, that's just not going to show us anything as a quality indicator. You've got other indicators that I believe are very robust. I have no question about the COTI score, the central line bloodstream infection score, the fall rate with injuries. They're very sensitive. I wish you would include, I'm asking you to include, other measures that we tested that are related to the level of nurse staffing.
Terrific. Thank you. That was exactly the answer I was looking for. Other questions? Yes. Dr. Allen first.
Thank you. So I have questions about the two additional measures you're suggesting. I have to say, I went to, both Dr. Hadis and I attended a TCSM post on opioids recently. And I have to say that I'm coming around to a different idea about pain control because one of the reasons we have an opioid problem is because of over-prescription of pain medication. So I have very much experience about whether that's an indicator that we ought to be focusing on at this point in time. My other question, though, is I really do like the idea of an outcome measure that reflects whether the patient got better in the ICU or in the case of what you suggested, didn't get better or die. And I'm curious, I think the staff resisted with this, and I guess this is more of a question for Lois, but the failure to rescue measure, did we consider that and not include? Was there, what was the thinking behind that?
We definitely considered that. And you know, I'll actually ask my colleague, Lisa, who is more in the weeds of these measures, if you have a thought on that.
We did consider the measure. It was suggested by the stakeholders for our consideration. And we applied specific criteria that are described in our notices to the public about, in recommending measures for reporting. And the failure to rescue measure is only reportable in the SIS, the surgical, for surgical patients. And so it was a sub-population that we felt was not broadly enough applicable to merit reporting for all ICUs.
So can I respond to that? And I understand that was your concern, which is why I did a specific analysis looking at cardiac intensive care units. And maybe people had cardiac surgery. But it does come up as significant. And importantly, of the indicators, if you look at the table that I provided at the end of my testimony, it comes up for all Massachusetts ICUs. Some of these come up for all, when you aggregate all Massachusetts ICUs, some of these indicators come up from all Massachusetts ICUs. And some of them only come up as statistically significant when you break it down. But there were three that are significantly associated with nurse staffing across all Massachusetts ICUs when you aggregate them. That's the COTI score, pain control, and deaths post-surgery, treatable complications. In terms of the robustness of these indicators, if I had to rank order them, the strongest one is significantly associated across all different types of hospitals. And I looked at geographic region, too. Boston versus Worcester versus Springfield. That would be the COTI score. Then the falls and the central line infection score are probably two and three kind of tied. And right in there with them is failure to rescue. I appreciate the concern about pain control. I just want to make one thing. I teach advanced psychopharmacology at Boston College. So we just had a lecture, I just gave a lecture on this. So I am very, very familiar with that. But I do think that patients are in the intensive care unit, those patients, I'm a psychiatric clinical specialist, those aren't the patients that we're worried about, to be very honest with the physicians. Though, who are on the panel, I think you understand what I'm saying. I treat the patients where we have issues around substance misuse. They're not in intensive care units unless we're not controlling their DTs.
And we, just to follow, we certainly considered the HCAP question on is your pain adequately controlled? And one of our concerns there was that that survey is given hospital-wide and it isn't specific to the ICU. And so it wouldn't be a measure that we could practically reach back to sort of align with increasing staffing and measure the impact of that.
That's a fair limitation. That's a fair limitation.
We appreciate all of this input and we're trying to balance, according to, as Lisa mentioned, the screens that we were trying to use to select the best set of measures that, you know, not each of them is perfect, but as a set balances across, they're applicable across ICUs. They weren't too limited in population. They're already collected and reported. So it's not to have a new measure that was untested. We used NQF as a national proxy for well-vetted and used as well as the nursing-sensitive indicators that NQF recognizes. And so appreciate your additional input on that.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, a quick question. First of all, I look forward to reading all the literature you cited, whether your own studies or CMS. My question is really about the CMS and falls with injury versus falls. I understood what you said, that CMS is recommending that if you monitor this in the ICU context, it be falls with injury and not just the falls rate. Is that because of the challenge in reporting around, when somebody has a fall, some institution, he gets reported, other places not, if there's no injury? Want to make sure I understood.
With all of these indicators, how you operationalize it to make sure it's reliable and valid is key. So if you read the report, what they grapple with is how do we get consistency, internal consistency in defining falls without injury? They concluded you can't, which is why you need fall with injury.
Well, that's a CMS report.
That's a CMS report from 2014. And it's not specific for ICUs, but it's just in general. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Very helpful. Okay, let me ask Julie Pickham from the MNA to come. And after that, Jenna Reposa.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good to see you. So I'm going to be very quick. I'm only going to read the last sentence of our recommendation, submit the rest as written testimony, and just make one general comment. So the last sentence says, "In summary, MNA recommends the following: catheter-associated urinary tract infection, patient falls with injury, and does not support central venous pressure-related bloodstream infections and pressure ulcer prevalence as there is no value or significant correlation in ICU staffing." So I'll submit the written portion of it because I think it's done pretty good so far with Judy's background in the literature. And the general, just my comment is more when the issue was being discussed. In the discussions about the language of the bill, as we discuss these items, it was important to try to find something that was directly related to ICU staffing. Because obviously, the intent of this is to be able to show the relationship of hopefully creating a standard and an improvement. So if we pick things that don't have a direct correlation to ICU staffing, then we didn't garner any benefit from putting in at the law. Because the only thing that we can expect from the outcome is we can't tell if it makes a difference or not. So that's just a general comment. So that's it. Unless you have questions.
Do you know, I have a question, and then Paul, did you have one as well?
I have.
Do you? I really understood the point about pressure ulcers. That was well-taken. I'd be interested in you just elaborating a little bit more on why the first two of those quality measures would not be nursing-sensitive.
Well, I won't speak to, actually, in terms of the research and the data, I'll leave that far more to Judy and the literature. And I think there can be any number of reasons why, whether it's the collection of the data. It's not necessarily that maybe it isn't sensitive. The issue is that when you're trying to record the data, whether you can draw the comparisons directly and reliably. So sometimes data that we're collecting, we just can't show it with consistency and therefore doesn't become a viable way for us doing an assessment. So those are two different things. I don't mean to sort of scurry it, but it probably is relative. But nobody's found a way to measure it in a manner that we can consistently use it for a good assessment. That's our point. So we, there are some things that are out there that clearly are now known to be statistically significant, acceptable, already recorded, specific to the ICU. So from our standpoint, pick from the bucket, if you will, of the known items that are already collected that are directly related to ICU. And not to suggest that if down the road, these other items, there are more reliable ways over time to be able to tease that out, that they wouldn't be very good to look at. But for the time being, this is what we have. So let's draw from what's directly relevant relative. By way of example, the central venous line catheters, you know, I mean, there's probably in some of the ICUs direct relevance because of dressing changes. But on the other hand, nurses aren't inserting them. So there's also many other hands, if you will, of high that may be relative to why infections are occurring. So unless you can tease out just the nursing component relative to the staffing, is it a good tool? So those are why we sort of cross this out. So go for the low-hanging fruit is our wish because it's important. We're doing something that's second to the nation here. It's really important to us that we draw from things that we can at least say something with a degree of confidence.
Paul?
I appreciate the thoughtfulness of your recommendation. And I agree that if there's literature or at least some literature, maybe quality literature supports that this is important to measure in the ICU context as it relates to staffing, that's where our measures ought to go. that's where our measures ought to go. And so that's what I'm hearing you say. And so I think you're absolutely right.
It was three to five, and frankly, from our standpoint, it's sort of a broad three to five, because the issue was, get the ones that are directly related, so we have something to measure. Worst possible scenario is we come out of this and there's no value to it. Because I can easily say, you picked items that aren't directly related to ICU staffing, and therefore why am I surprised when we can't, you know, show any relevance?
Great. Thank you very much. Jenna? So Jenna Reposa, and then Lisa Kingston. And it's unclear from the sound of sheet whether it's Lisa Kingston and David Sherman together or separately. So if you could just separately? Thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name is Jenna Reposa. I'm from New Bedford. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm not a nurse, and I work in a hospital, but I have been a patient. I'm a cardiac patient, and I have been for the last six years. I'm here today not to speak about what you have included in these regulations, but about what has been left out. And I think it needs, I think needs to be there for patients and their families, patients like me and families like mine, because when I'm hospitalized, my family really goes off the deep end. Patients and their families need to be informed of the new ICU law, limiting the number of patients an ICU nurse can care for at one time. And I can't stress enough how important it is for families to get this information, and even me, as a patient. I'm left sometimes hanging in the air with questions and nobody to answer them. Information about the one-to-one or certain cases of one to two nurse, two patient limits should be posted in a hospital where families can see them, or given to the families of patients as soon as they're admitted into ICU. They need to know the standard of care for which they are entitled to. It should also be included in any written materials provided by the hospital, which sometimes they don't come by very early on into your admission. So if there's any disagreement as to the patient's security, and the patient is assigned to a nurse who was already caring for another ICU patient, against the advice of the ICU staff nurses, the family should be informed of this dispute and the reasoning behind it, and not to follow the advice of the ICU staff nurses. We have a new system in our local hospitals in our area, and I'm not really happy with a lot of the changes that they've made there. And so this is very important to me, and I'm going to study up some more on this when I get home. Laws are replaced to protect the patients, and it is critical that in very stressful times, such as an ICU admission, that the patients and their families, especially my family, are aware of their rights under the law. If you do not require this in the regulations as part of the requirement around public reporting, you are leaving it to the individual hospitals to decide how patients and their families will be informed about their rights. And that scares me.
Thank you so much. And thank you for, we enjoyed that so much. We'd like to ask you a few questions. Thank you. And personally, I really appreciate your coming and presenting your point of view here.
Yes.
Carol?
Thank you very much for speaking up. The voice of the patient or the family is so crucial to all that we do, and I think we have to always remind ourselves to include that. And to that end, one of the things that I sort of wanted to get in the language, but I think we left out of the language of these advisory committees within hospitals, was to suggest that there be a representative, a patient representative or family representative in that group, because that perspective is otherwise missing. I would be interested to know your opinion of that, and also whether you, as a patient, or if you know of people in the hospital that you're familiar with, are included in either governance of the hospital or in the quality improvement efforts in the hospital. What has been the role of patients and families?
My experience, I only have children living in the area now, so I have to depend on them, you know. All my other kids are way out. So, and the two children that I have with me are very emotional when I get sick. And so it's like needing to bring a third person in, you know, to manage this. I'm doing my best, they're doing their best, the hospital does provide, I would let, something like a social worker that will come in, but it's not the same. You know, it's nothing, it's not professional enough. The nurses like each other, God bless them. God bless them, because they got my back, I know they do. Thank God for them. But it's hard to explain what's going on in our hospitals, in our area. You have to see it. You have to experience it, you know. So it's a good idea. I think there should be more of that. I do have, what do you call it, proxy, you know, I have a healthcare proxy. She's not always around. So it's hard, you know, especially for people like me who are almost alone, you know, I'm not alone, I do have family, I do have friends, but not enough. So it's hard. It's hard. And I'm learning more as, you know, and I'm going to learn more about this, because it affects me. It does. And there are many things that I find wrong going on in our hospitals that I think could be done better, because we live in Massachusetts, and we live in a country that's wealthy, beyond that means. And we should have the best healthcare for every single person.
Have you been asked by the hospital to give that kind of feedback, the thing that when you see something as could be done in a different way?
I do, but not in a formal way. It's more your... Yeah, more, yeah.
You know about PCT, the Patient Family Advisory Council? The value of your testimony and Carol's question make me think, gee, is there any intersection with, you know, the Patient Family Advisory Council should ultimately be brought up to date on what happens in a particular institution around this whole issue? You know, it might get in the interest of those...
They do come around, actually, once in a while, when you're a patient, they'll come in. I don't know if it's that particular organization, but they do come into the room and say, I'll ask you a question. What do you think of this? And what do you think of that?
I believe every hospital has to have a Patient Family Advisory Council. I think the value of this testimony is making me think, gee, is there a way that we should hope, I don't know if we mandate it, there's some intersection between that process and what's going on in there.
Right, thank you. I think I'm the only one that they really come around to talk to, because I complain.
That may be part of it, but you also have something good to say. Thank you so much. So we have three people left. We have asked to testify. Lisa Kingston, welcome. After Lisa will be Dave Sherman, and then Judy Grob. If there's any...
Rose is the last.
Judy Grob, sorry. No problem. I beg your pardon. And if there is anyone else, if you would just very quickly let Colleen know, we'll see if we can add to one. Judy Grob. Okay, Lisa, welcome.
Hi. My name is Lisa Kingston, and I am a critical care registered nurse. I will provide an abbreviated example of why I am concerned about the proposed regulations that give hospital management the power to make the final acuity tools selection. Please make time to read my entire testimony. Even before this law was passed, my nonprofit hospital X began to circumvent it. Sure, we still had our one-nurse-to-two-patient ratio, except for those immediate post-op from cardiac surgery, intratheotic balloon pump patients, left ventricular assist device patients, or hypothermic therapy patients who still had one-to-one nursing. However, Hospital X stripped our units of our unit clerks and nursing assistants. Our clinical leaders were routinely being used as staff and unavailable to buffer rapid changes in acuity. Nurses who left were not replaced. Our staffing matrix changed, and our facility now pays double time to avoid mandatory overtime complaints and to avoid hiring new nurses. A healthcare ICU works together as a team. Although we still tried to be a team, it became increasingly difficult to do so, because everyone was maxed out on patients. Regularly scheduled certified nursing assistants, if there were any, were being used in one-to-one safety sitting roles. Unit clerks, if one was even scheduled, were expected to cover several units. Clinical leaders were routinely taking assignments. It didn't matter that nurses who had left were not replaced, or that nurses seeking increased training and skills were not given that training. The staffing matrix changed. Clinical unit leaders were being used as staff and were unavailable. I began dreading work, fearing that pretty soon the cumulative effect of the do more with less approach would catch up with us and patients would suffer. Earlier this year, the cumulative effect of our work environment caught up with us. My patient, whom I'll call A, suffered the loss of his life unexpectedly. For several hours prior to his death, I was busy with another patient, whom I'll call B. Patient B required near constant supervision, as he was vacillating between manageability and unmanageability pending intervention versus not by the docs involved. Several code safeties, expert and professional help from security, and coworkers. Every nurse on the unit had two patients, no certified nursing assistant, heavy patients, high acuity, patients with frequent stoling, one-to-ones, et cetera. My frequent noticing of patient A's vitals as I raced in and out of patient B's room were not enough to keep him alive. He needed a routine assessment that I and my coworkers were unable to provide. I believe that if I had had a clinical leader, a nursing assistant, or a coworker who had only one patient, things might be different. I wish I could say that that day was an anomaly. That day was just another example of the new norm. That day was the epitome of the cumulative effect of the do more with less approach, and I believe this contributed to my patient's death. Patients are admitted to critical care because they require nurses who can detect subtle changes, think critically, and intervene before situations become lethal. This takes time. When the unit isn't properly staffed, nurses are too busy doing non-direct care tasks like answering phones, managing visitors, absorbing the duties normally performed by CNAs, troubleshooting computers, I'll say that four times, trying to get documentations done, and subtle changes may be missed. Even though all medical personnel involved determined this death was unavoidable, this patient, who would have been awake, talking, and aware, died alone. Perhaps frightened, perhaps in pain, and perhaps aware that he was dying. This is what happens when, even with the right ratio, remote hospital administrators decide what is right for a unit and routinely choose to strip the unit of its unit clerk, certified nursing assistant, and clinical leaders. Now you are asking nurses to trust the final selection of an acuity tool to the expertise and experience of hospital administration? No one can better understand the term acuity than the nurse at the bedside. Managers are valued by administration for their ability to save money by cutting costs. Administration should learn to trust healthcare's greatest asset, the bedside nurses. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of critically ill patients, their families, immune nurses.
Thank you very much. Dave Sherman, and then Judy Grob.
Dr. Everett, members of the commission, it's an honor to testify today before an organization of dedicated public service. My name's Dave Sherman. I've been a ICU nurse for almost 20 years, certified in my specialty and in subspecialty. Some of my work having been published in peer-reviewed journals in my field. I will summarize my testimony, as I was unaware of the three-minute limit, and I will make my written testimony available to you immediately.
Thank you so much.
An important addition to the regulations, I think, to make the law at all workable, would be to specify that retaliation against staff nurses who advocate one-to-one status against management, or who testify at these and similar hearings is forbidden and punishable. As I see it, the acuity tool will be most specifically governed by 8.07 number four. ICU level care continues to evolve, demanding more time from nurses, as it does almost as I speak. I want to make clear at the outset that the evolution that I will discuss here is a good thing. We see better patient outcomes from the examples that I will use. And I hope the commission will support it in every way. There is an increased amount of time that is pulling nurses away from various important critical care tasks. It is in the low-tech field. I'm talking about assistance with, assistance of daily living. I'm talking about mobility. Mobility is something that is shown to result in better outcomes in a bunch of different ways. Assisting patients with a bath, the bath is now much more complicated now that we use antiseptic bathing techniques. It can require 35 to 40 minutes of a nurse's time to help a total assisted patient, and that's 35 to 40 minutes that is not spent doing other vital critical care tasks. And I think it's a fair thing to say, that time available is quite proportional to quality of care. Family support is another issue that has emerged much more bravely in the years that I've been in the field. Stability and acuity are not the only patient determinants of staff availability for emerging situations. Patient advocacy, family support, infectious status. We're spending more time, we're spending more time than we used to because of the prevalence of, the increased prevalence of C. diff, MRSA, the newer carbopen-resistant enterobacteri epi. Doing more hand hygiene and barrier precautions. The tool, I think, should capture these. And I think that, and I think that 8.074 really does not necessarily do that. Lastly, regarding 8.07, of all the body systems mentioned, the vascular is omitted, thus missing the acuity of patients who may have stable cardiac systems, cardiac is mentioned, but require frequent vascular checks due to fluoroscopic intravascular procedures. Acuity tools should be required to include the vascular system as well as the psychosocial system. And I think it's also reasonable to include substance abuse issues here, too. 8.10's reporting requirements should legitimately also require reporting on disagreements on staffing between assigned staff nurses and nurse managers, and how they will result, preferably instance by instance, as opposed to statistical form for better data accessibility. Consistent with the factor of family-centered care, it would be appropriate to require that the statutory staffing requirements would be posted in family waiting areas, perhaps even in patient rooms. And I think that that addresses the concern addressed by Ms. Reposa earlier. Lastly, my reading of Statute 111, MGL 231, is that it is in effect now, even while these regulations are being drafted. I hope that the commission can issue guidance to this effect to hospitals. I'd like to thank the commission for the public service they've provided, for hearing my testimony today. I mentioned a moment ago my hope that the commission will support the evolution of critical care nursing that I described. And keeping the new and important safe staffing law solid would be part of that support. I hope the changes that I recommend springing from my perspective in the trenches will be adopted in order to do so. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I know there were a lot of questions about Quadromet. I'm a daily user of Quadromet, and if you have any questions specifically about that, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
Thank you so much. And Colleen?
Just one quick comment. I appreciate, I guess it underscores a lot of the comments today about the limits of the acuity tool. I think back to my mother's last hospitalization, which included ICU state before she died. If one of my siblings was in the room, probably you had three ICU staff nurses, you know, and they're not because of the patient, but because of the family member. So it just underscores for me the, because of, I felt there was own anxiety about what was going on. So it underscores for me that the tool, you know, has its limits potentially in terms of really knowing at any given moment what the needs are. So I appreciate sort of the breadth of your comments.
If I can give a quick example about that, I can think of one particular patient who was a young mother who was quite critically ill, and she survived, I'm glad to say. But it was a family need to have the little baby, or I should say, a toddler, in the room. And the toddler's father was not necessarily in complete control of the toddler. What that meant was that the toddler constituted a trick hazard in the room for nurses. Now that is a time element, and that also pulls away from quality of care that any critical care nurse would be able to provide to that patient. So I thank you for your comment.
Mine is a quick question, because we're short on time, but you say you're a regular user, user of Quadromet. And so my question is, is it used just for patient assignment? Is it used as part of the patient's medical record in terms of documenting what happened with those patients? Because this was an earlier conversation that we had, and I haven't heard it come up again. When should these tools somehow be part of a medical record?
Sure. So I'm going to comment as an end user who's in my silo, and I don't necessarily see everything that's going on upwards and laterally from me. I'm aware that the leader of our team is actually in the room. I don't actually see, so we are required to use the Quadromet in my institution every day, every 24 hours, and at patient admission, and at change of patient condition. The, I don't actually, and we're told from above, that use of the Quadromet helps the hospital get further funding from its ownership institution. That said, I don't actually see it being used as a staffing tool. I don't hear conversations when I've been in charge, when I've heard charge nurses talking. I have never seen anybody say, oh, this patient's a Quadromet score of six, which is the highest score that we can give somebody. This patient's a Quadromet score of six, and therefore should be staffed more heavily, is more appropriate as a one-to-one staffing. I do see staffing decisions being made as, well, this patient's on an adementeric, needs one-to-one. This patient is... This patient is receiving CVVA, continuous venous hemodialysis, needs one-to-one staffing. But I never hear Quadromet come into the conversation.
Interesting. Thank you very much. And thank you for submitting your testimony.
I can't remember that I have...
You may hand it right there to Colleen, she will take it for you. Okay, Judy Gross, our final testimony today.
Hello, everybody. First of all, thank you so much for taking my testimony. Can I, am I being heard okay? Secondly, I'd like to thank all the presenters on both sides of the issue because I learned quite a bit. My name is Judy Gross. I hate to burst anybody's bubble, but I have 15 years in healthcare, all at the bedside. I recently retired, the end of November, so thumbs up, don't wait to 67 like I did, go sooner. It's a lot of fun, and you get to the best part of your nursing career mentally. Before I give my testimony, I would like to address the quality measure issue. I know there's back and forth about falls versus falls with injury. A, let me state upfront, I am not an ICU nurse. I avoid that like the plague. However, I have been floated into the ICU as not, not to act as an ICU nurse, but to be like the final backup so that we could keep the two-to-one ratio, but maybe there was a really sick patient, so that Addison over at hospital lost her mask, spending dollars you lost her this summer, they would have like a med surgeon or, you know, float in, so you were sort of there to assist the others. But I won't speak about the falls versus falls with injury. You can have a patient fall, but the injury may not show up for several days, particularly fractures, any type of a head injury or a bleed. So for instance, somebody falls over, hits their belly, ruptures their spleen, may not show up right away. They may have a slow bleed, all of a sudden, two days later, wow, how come this patient's H&amp;H is in the toilet? Well, because they had a fall. So I think you need to be very careful when you look at the fall. I think you need to track the length of time, maybe the patient is in the hospital, if they go home within a short period of time, you need to track what's happening to them. Do they come back to the ER? So, I know time is short, so I'm going to be quick. My testimony takes a little bit of a different tack, but I think if you indulge me a few minutes, you'll see where I'm going, and I think it provides an overall framework for these very serious decisions.
Before you start, I do need to tell you, you are at your three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So...
It is submitted, any written testimony, I just want to...
If you would like to choose one fabulous paragraph...
I will make this.
You could read that, and then we would be grateful to have you submit it.
Thank you. I think it already has been submitted through the MNE, so I will do my concluding paragraph. I have seen a lot in the 50 years of my active involvement in healthcare. I remember when healthcare was actually about health and not money. Somehow it has been all twisted around, and I suspect the health insurers and upper management of these fine institutions, as well as the federal and state government and movers and shavers of industry are the responsible parties, even though most hospitals are supposed to be nonprofit. Now, I am not a stupid person, and I realize everyone has to have a budget and financial resources to sustain growth and development of services. But my question to those who oppose this ICU staffing is to ask themselves, where do they want to put their money? Do they want to have tick-tock quality staff across the board, paying them appropriately, providing adequate benefits, education, and training, therefore creating a positive, non-threatening work environment that is just culture, which every hospital has on their buzzwords, so each employee can feel supported in their work and strive to do the best always? Or do you want to nipple and dime us to death, creating a negative work environment, poor patient care with poor outcomes, and possibly readmissions, which may or may not be paid for by the insurers, just because there wasn't enough staff to provide the necessary care and education of that patient? Does hospital administration want to pay for it now by being a leader and saying no to the insurers? That patient does need another day to get better and maybe go home with services instead of to a rate rehab. That we do need to review our staffing matrix and hire more staff on all levels. Oops, I lost my place. Providing them with education and the tools to do the job right and the desire to expand their healthcare career? Or do they want to pay for it later with fines, lawsuits, poor prestidigous scores, negative publicity, and unhappy employees, which need to increase sick time, overtime, higher healthcare rates, and staff turnover with this increased cost of orientation and training? You tell me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So that concludes the testimony today. I know how much time and effort and thought goes into preparing these remarks and submitting your testimony, and I'm very grateful for that. I think that there were a number of fairly subtle issues that were raised and that you have thought through and certainly given us more information about, more things for us to consider as we revise the regulations. There is, there will be a second public hearing held in Worcester on Thursday, April 2nd, from 10 o'clock in the morning until noon. This is, will be, and I think actually is posted on our website now, so good to pass that along. I thank my committee members and staff members and commission members for joining us today, but mostly thanks to all of you for what you've contributed.